I just, I don't know if you're, I think they just dropped that out.
They probably don't.
Yeah, I don't think it's for discussion here.
Mentioned something.
Was that the guy that was later?
He just popped in at six P M.
Is that right?
Six o'clock, we'll call this meeting to order the April twenty eighth planning commission for City Chapel Hill. We have a quorum. I believe everyone is here, so I believe we do. Approval of minutes from our last meeting. Last two minutes. Uh, yeah, because one was a, we had a special call meeting and a regular. So I have a motion.
I'm making motions.
Do I have a second? Got a motion and a second, any discussion on those? Here none, all in favor say aye. A both, motion carries. Next item is public comments. Looks like we got a full house. Uh, we are gonna ask, uh, the public comments be limited to agenda items that are on the agenda for tonight's meeting. And anyone wishing to speak, we'll give you a three minute window to speak. If we give repetitious comments, we deserve the right to shut down. Uh, if anyone wants to speak, we're gonna ask, state your name, your address, and whether you're a citizen of the city limits of Chapel Hill or not. So do we have any public comments regarding agenda items for tonight's meeting? All right, here and done, we'll move on to new business. Item number one is consideration to revise the conditional approval made on March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five with respect to the sidewalk requirement for Horton Highway Utility, Utility District, uh, site plan located five three five three National Highway Chapel Hill, Tennessee. Uh, we have, who's applicant here? Sounds like it. Okay, so the conditional approval is, what are we here discussing?
So, at the.
Yeah, you're, you're.
But, uh, at the last meeting, it was approved on the condition that we put sidewalks from property line to property line on both the national highway side and the equal plight side.
Okay.
And after, you know, thinking on that, I wanted to know what the regulations were, wanted that in writing. And that's kinda what I've, uh, you know, kinda asked about and.
Okay.
So that's where.
Uh, so Steve, do you, uh, this is a commercially is unplaced property, right?
It's commercial.
Fee two prob, fee two properly? Uh, the nu- the new regulations that we have that require sidewalks, uh, is that subject to all zones? Okay.
Is that in the sub项 or the zone?
No, subdivision.
Yeah.
Okay, so if, uh, this is just a question I have, if they're not subdivided property and they already own a parcel of property in a site plan condition, are they required to add sidewalks if it was a previously subdivided lot?
Uh, yeah, because I mean, it's, you know, the site plan was proved.
Subject to.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so it's in our subdivision regulations and anything commercial is required to have a site, a full site plan approval and design review. And I think we're following to that now. Any cases where we have a sidewalk leading to nowhere, we have had applicants in the past request a variance of the city to, um, I guess get around that requirement if the sidewalk literally doesn't make sense. If you are not connected to the sidewalk on either side, then I, I believe, I talk right, may I have a wrong, but I believe that would require a variance, uh, to get around the sidewalk requirement, or would it not?
Well, it requires a special exception from this board, yes, it's not a variance.
So not a variance, it's a special exception to, to deviate from what the rules are. And I think the, the ground would be, or, or are there any other, is there any other connectivity to existing sidewalks?
There's no connectivity, uh, my concern is the property falls off and I think as you go north.
So it's not real practical?
No. I mean, it's, you know, the practicality of it's pretty low.
So with, uh, with the physical characteristics of the property not being conductive for a sidewalk, is that something from an engineer's standpoint, I mean, is that?
Yeah, we, we'll look at it, so you can just verify it.
Okay.
Uh, I think y'all have the plans that show the elevation.
Yes, I saw, uh, I didn't see it in the package. Uh, yeah, I didn't see it in the package. I got you. I mean, ju- just from a, from a practical standpoint, if the, if the slope of the property is not such that a sidewalk is practical and if there's no one there that would use the sidewalk, it don't make sense to put a sidewalk in, but I think we would have to, this board would have to know that. Is that something y'all know?
So I have, I have a question, so if we have, if we're making, um, um, s- conditional special requests that are allowing things like sidewalks that lead to nowhere, um, be allowed to not happen. At some point then, there's never gonna be a sidewalk, because if nobody has to build a sidewalk, because there's not a sidewalk, then how do sidewalks get built? And then if somewhere, uh, let's say, uh, the, the, uh, the Spring Creek expands or, or, or anything expands that says, hey, we're gonna put a sidewalk, then ultimately, we're gonna run into situations that the sidewalk. Exactly. So how, how?
So, so I think one, the main way we safeguard against that is somebody is subdividing property and it's more than just a lot or two, I think for the past, at least eight or ten years, we've consistently been requiring sidewalks. Any exceptions we've allowed are single divisions of property or in their place like a site plan that's several years old where there's nothing around that could be sidewalk. The only, I guess, concession that I could think of that might safeguard the city against that is we could specify a timeframe that if other development happens around that within a certain number of years, the applicant add the sidewalk, but I know where their property is and I don't.
Yeah.
There's any other plans right.
For sure.
Right next door, you know, that we got on the table right now.
I just think about if, if, if a situation does arise where in order for the city to not have to monetarily take that because we're giving a break because the sidewalk doesn't lead to somewhere, and then sidewalks start popping up.
If they did put a sidewalk on their property, it would almost have to be somewhere other than along the highway.
Yeah, because it, yeah, be, and theirs is again that.
Or you had to build a sidewalk and have a guardrail.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Of a, a fall barrier against the side of the sidewalk.
Maybe something to. Yeah. In their, in their case, it makes sense.
So in their case, what's the desire of the board, y'all wanna add on this as a, as a special exception, uh, specific to the property? Or do you wanna test or, or table it for a month and let the engineer and the applicant do it together?
I would feel comfortable if we did that.
Table it, will you make that in form of a motion?
I would like to make the motion that we table the sidewalk for or utility district until the applicant and the engineer can converse, find a plan and present back to the board, sir.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, any discussion on the motion, ask second. Is the applicant okay?
We're, we're fine with that.
Okay, all right.
I see you also got that address changed. Well, it, it shows a different address than the first one, because that was another little glitch that.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, we'll vote on if they are tabling this, say aye?
All right.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank y'all. Uh, do y'all have Steve's contact information?
I, I'll get what they need.
Yes.
Okay. Thank y'all. Item number two under new business is consideration to approve or deny the Ellington subdivision revision and resubmitment of construction plan for the property located at one oh eight Morning Side Drive, Chapel Hill, Tennessee. Uh, is the applicant here or representative, I should say?
Uh, Louis, William, and T Square, we're just, uh, the property has since changed hands since the last approval and this is the new developer trying to kind of make it a more feasible constructability, uh, for the project. Just trying to get those revisions in and approved by you guys so we can get the project started finally.
Okay, so on the, on the revisions, has the number of lots increased or decreased?
It's stayed the exact same.
Stayed the same? And I saw the, I saw all the water calculations, Steve, have you reviewed this? Uh, and all the drain off, runoff drainage, everything seems to work?
I will say, I did, he just passed me some comments and I'm looking at them and I, I don't see any, anything that we can't work through in the next week or two to take care of any of your concerns.
The comments submitted would be a condition of any type of approval? Was that in our packet or they just, they just?
They're in the page.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have a question. What are you gonna do with roadway? Which roadway? Spring Creek.
My understanding was that during the preliminary plat, there was discussion about this and, Isaac, correct me if I misinterpreted this, but there was no improvement slated for Spring Creek, however, I believe on the preliminary plat, if the construction caused damage to the road, it would have to be rebuilt.
And, and I do, I do recall that at that time, at that moment in time when the preliminary plat was approved, this is from memory, it was discussed that if all the construction equipment coming in now hurt or damaged Spring Creek Street, that had the developer, uh, in essence, would have to make, improve the city street if they, if they cared about us. But as far as widening the street at that time, at that time, I don't even think our regulations required to discuss that.
But my concern is the high school traffic that leaves out the back, that will be east of your location that will travel Spring Creek. If the traffic generated out of this development enters Spring Creek, that, it's just, it's gonna be chaos. And that road's not wide enough now to accommodate a lot of the two-way traffic. And I'm not sure if you've done any kind of road study or paid attention to what some of the, uh, speed is on there. It's, it's, it's horrible, so I, I would like for you to be able to have a traffic study done to see what you can come up with, the data that you can get and present back to us because it's, it's, it's gonna pose a significant problem to all of us in that area.
At, at one time, was there an entrance on the Morning Side Drive as well, or is that?
No, there's, that was. That was discussed, but there was a forty foot right away in the city. That was there.
It requires a fifty. Uh, this is a new one, I mean, it's a construction plan.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, this, so there's not a revised plat, this is just the same plat, but just revised construction plans, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So I don't.
It's already been approved.
Yeah.
The preliminary plat was approved.
Under, under previous terms, is that matter?
Under previous, uh, sub-rig, so my question, I guess, with this being a new submit.
Yeah.
Does it fall under?
Is the middle under a new one?
The, this one, yes. Yeah, because, because it's just a construction, it's just, if they were revising, doing a major revision to the plat, then yes, but with it being a just revision to construction plans and the same, basically the same plat, no. I do remember, one, one thing back to the road briefly, you know, before construction permits beyond grading are issued, you know, the, the planning commission can consider requiring post bond for damages to roadways. Um, but that's probably the limit of what you can do with respect to the plat that's already been approved. Now, the construction, again, if, if Steve has signed off on the revisions to the construction plans, then, and that's all this is, then.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that we have to vote on this, because it's not changing the plat that they've already got approval in. And it's not the final plat, it's just, I guess, it wouldn't like to move forward with the construction.
Right, yeah, if they were to come back with a final plat that's not consistent with the preliminary plat, then that's another issue to have to deal with then, but this is just the construction plans that the engineer says they comply with our construction standards.
Uh, so Liz, do you, would the applicant consider posting a, a maintenance or surety bond of some kind for the existing roadway ahe- ahead of starting the construction? Who would? You're, you're, you're the developer, landowner, the developer, got you, that's all, okay.
Just the same property has to have a certain time to go in and out every two hours.
We, we discussed that.
For the rock, for dirt.
I want to make sure we still stick to that.
I was just for the construction.
There's no, there's no, there's nothing the planning commission at this point has the ability to get any kind of road improvements in gress or address out of that space.
Uh, yeah, with the preliminary plat already have been approved and there was no traffic study required at that time for, for that, then, no, I mean, again, we can require posting a bond, but do you consider road improvements might require, if you're gonna do any road widening or anything like that, that's gonna require acquisition of easements on other prop, other property owners and everything.
Possibly utilities, I mean, you've gotta deal with.
Yeah.
Move utilities.
And how many, what are there, seventy?
Seventy one, seventy one lots.
I mean, is that gonna?
I believe that was downgraded, the original plan they had was closer than ninety, ninety maybe?
I think the very first one was close to ninety.
It was eighty, eighty-nine or ninety, and then they downgraded to make the water retention, they, they, they over.
Mr. Chair, you have a question you wanna.
Why was there no traffic impact study done?
Uh.
Just given how narrow the road is and the high school entrance and everything.
That was a different, a different time, uh, a lot of different board members at the time and it's been several years ago, and I can't answer that question.
So you can't retroactively get one, request one?
I'm gonna defer to our attorney, but.
That's what I just asked, because I have pictures on my phone, one single dump truck blocks direction both ways.
Sir, can you state your name and your address?
Gregory Stone, three one four Spring Creek Street. Uh, what else you need?
In the city limits or not?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Gotcha. Uh, so one single dump truck, so say two show up at some same time, which happened the other day when they were doing the gravel entrance, one had to sit in the street, the traffic was blocked both directions. It's not like you could just, you know, sit for a couple minutes and then get your way around the dump truck, both directions. So semi trucks, dump trucks, all that stuff block traffic in both directions. So, with, with the spring, with the spring street, street entrance.
For, for hauling in material, we had discussed.
He's talking about when they were doing, uh, water utility.
We had discussed not bringing in, uh, a lot of trucks during school loading and offloading of time. Uh, as far as during the construction phase and construction phase only, and it would probably be a discretion of the applicant, uh, it's possible they could have a secondary construction entrance or maybe even a pull-off, maybe even a driveway that, you know, a truck to park in, if two trucks happen to show up at the same time.
Right, there's, there's a, a place where, uh, you can access the property from Morning Side, I haven't really done a lot of investigation, but I don't know if maybe that would be, uh, a, a better alternative, um, just 'cause me and my neighbors have lost a lot of mailboxes and, uh, you know, I know this development is only gonna bring more, but you know, if there's, uh, uh, if we can maybe open up another entrance on Morning Side to minimize the traffic that's coming up and down Spring Creek Street, since it sounds like it's not gonna get expanded more than likely, uh, just from what I'm hearing, so that, that, that's all, uh, you know, it was gonna say that.
We want to be as accommodating as possible, I mean, I know how frustrating that can be, so, you know, if there's a pull-off, we can do, or we'll be happy to do that. Specifically during the construction phase and large equipment, if there could be a secondary construction entrance, entrance utilized during the construction phase, I think that would be helpful, uh, and the applicant seems like he's willing to work with the city, uh, for that.
And so, uh, as far as widening Spring Creek, you're gonna refer that to the attorney and, uh, is that table for now, or?
The preliminary plat that was a prior approved.
Right.
Uh, did not require any off-site improvements to this development.
Gotcha, well, I wasn't sure since it was a, a new, I guess, new owner, new submit, if that would, uh, change that.
I believe the submittal, we discussed that a second, a second ago, is just the submittal for the construction plans. The preliminary plat did not change, is still the same number of lots. O- overall substantially conforms to the original layouts, I don't, uh, I don't know from what our attorney was saying, I don't know that we can backtrack and require off-site improvements that were not previously required.
And you don't have an answer on why there was no traffic impact study to begin with?
I personally do not, does anyone else have a answer to that?
I just can't imagine a more, like, a, 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 a better candidate for one with the back entrance to the high school and how narrow the road is if you've driven up and down it and the, the frequent requests for the officers to sit back there and monitor the traffic, you know, just turns into the auto bond at seven and two every day.
I mean, I, I mean.
Is there any way we could start putting that amount forward, make it man, mandatory for every phase?
For large developments, we discussed that.
Large development?
We discussed that at many meetings, move forward, I mean, proactively, we discussed requiring that.
It automatically has to be shown in front of us before we approve anything else?
So moving forward, all subdivisions will have a traffic impact survey.
Phases.
Not unless required like T dot or anything over seventy-five lots or more, that's when a traffic study. Over seventy-five. Seventy-five or more, yeah. So that's why I dropped it. To a, to a T dot highway, seventy-five or more.
Is that for each phase or the total?
I believe that would be the total.
The total.
Will be required on the concept?
If you're loading in, offloading onto a state highway. State highway. Highway ninety-nine, thirty-one A.
Only state highway.
That's a T dot requirement is what this proposes.
But that still don't help in this way.
As well.
Spring Creek, it is not.
We can, I mean, with respect to future developments, and, and I don't, I don't, I know offhand, Steve, Mike, what the requirements in our subdivision regulations for, are for requiring a traffic study and what discretion planning commission has under certain circumstances to require a traffic study, you have some flexibility to do that.
We can amend the subrigs.
Yeah, we can't do it tonight just verbally, you'd have to look at the subrigs and, and make that amendment.
And we can't do it retroactively, we can't go back to.
Right, now, to, to the points that were raised though, if, if you're having issues with town streets with respect to construction of this development, you can certainly reach out, work with the developer to figure out how to fix that because you, obviously, the development can't block public roads unnecessarily, so if you can't work out an agreement, you know, you have some options in enforcing that to make sure traffic can still flow during construction, but that, you know, that's kind of a separate issue from the number of cars that would be traveling after the development's built.
Question on the, on the map that shows that Hastings approach, you got the Jethison out to Hastings? Is that gonna be an access road or is that just service utilities or?
That is just utilities, so at this time, you know, because it was, because there was not fifty feet available, we couldn't make a full access. And to, to the point, I remember discussing, um, that being a construction entrance and at the time, planning commission did not want the construction access to go through that, but it sounds like it, it could be acceptable now for.
Would it make sense?
For construction to, to be able to use that, so that, that's, that's why it would, nothing was shown there for construction access.
And it sounds like the applicant, the developer's good, willing to work with us on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Chung.
Would it make sense to allow that, give a variance on the forty to, uh, fifty to forty, to allow that to be an entrance if it makes, if it's better for the town as a whole?
I think that, that, I think that's something Steve would have to dive into and really see, if that would be practical in some point, I don't, not, not sure. Jonathan, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Is there a time limit on, say, when the free land was submitted to the time they have to start construction? Is there any kind of, I mean, can you submit it and wait fifteen years and go by the, the old rules, or is there a time limit?
There is a time limit, I can't remember exactly what it is and what the date this was originally planned, that's one reason I wanted to clarify, because the, the clock, if they submitted a revised plan and the town approved it, that would restart the clock for the existing regulations, but this would go back and we can look and see whether this was first approved. With work having been somewhat continuous on this development, I don't think we're at risk of this plat expiring, but we can look at that and see.
Okay.
I mean, I mean. If it changes owners multiple times, none of that.
If it's, if it's normative, no engineering, no activity, no planning, no discussions, I think the answer to your question is yes, preliminary plat would expire, but if the applicant can prove with engineering that it's actively been worked on, I believe it's, it's safe to go to final as long as you're not changing or modifying a plat now. I'm not sure of the exact timelines and everything, but I've, you know, just moving dirt is part of it, so a big part of it, more time to continue to move the dirt is planning to move it all the way down, uh, naturally, than this thirty-page document is, and I think they, at least, uh, Lewis has been here three or four times over the past four years, I guess, three years, maybe?
Two years, two and a half years.
Yeah, two, two years or more, so I know they've actively been working on the, the design and the engineering work. Uh, so I don't know that we have to take any action and vote on this, if it's, if, uh, nothing's changed. I guess my only concern would be making sure that Steve works with the applicants, engineers, uh, make sure everything is in accordance with what was required at the time that the preliminary plat was, uh, was approved and the applicant worked with was on a secondary construction entrance. And, and.
Can we, can we look at that, um, other entrance to see if the variance would work based on accommodating, making life easier on the people over there?
And if you wanted to put it on the agenda for next month to look at that issue and just the traffic flow during construction generally, you can.
Okay. But the second entrance would require a variance for a forty-foot right away instead of a fifty?
Well, we could see what the limitations are for, you know, going real feet, while they can, it's just like.
Got you.
I'm sorry, did you say include the traffic study as well?
No, no, but, but the issue with regard to construction traffic, you can, yeah, and, and even the issue of post bond for damage to the barriers, you could look at that.
And do you guys accept traffic impact surveys from outside, like a third party? Like, we took upon ourselves to do a traffic impact survey, to submit?
I mean, it was done by a reputable, reputable engineered firm, I don't know why the city wouldn't look at it, I, I.
Again, you know, you, you can, you can look at it in, for terms of planning and what the town needs to do with respect to the roadways as far as requiring the developer now for this development to make those improvements, I don't think legally you can do that, but you could look at it and, and it might, you might get something from it that you could make, okay, well, here's what we need to do moving forward in terms of plans for these roads, and it, and it might impact the secondary access issue.
Would the secondary access be okay if it works? Just as long as it's not like a large amount, you know, get their access to bond, that would work for us. Okay. Yeah. For, uh, construction and apartment. So do we, do we need to make a motion?
I think I'd make a motion to put, to, put this on the agenda for next month to look at those issues.
Okay.
Uh, I'll make a motion to table it till next month pending engineering, T Square, and developmental discussions.
Have a second, any discussion?
So you're gonna get, um, right away?
Discuss the right away for, discuss the right away for. Discuss the right-of-way for, discuss the right-of-way for potential second entrance. And the bond, the bond amount, I guess Steve, you and Louis and the applicant can come up with a fair amount for.
And that bond amount should replace a portion of the road if it's damaged.
Correct, correct, yeah. A big low boy.
We're gonna have to.
Yes, yes. All right, we'll vote on the table of this for, till the May meeting. All tables say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion periods. Moving on to item number three, under new business, considerations to approve or deny the Bell Bigger's addition revisions on lot eight subdivision schedule plan and making determination of the subdivision classification. So, the determination would be whether it requires a preliminary and a final or only a final. I believe it does require a preliminary, is that correct, Steve?
One.
So, the plat as submitted, if we take action on it, it would be clear that it's, we, it would be, because it has a preliminary plat not a final plat because it is over the, I guess, four lots is where it turns into a major subdivision step of a mountain.
Well, that's a discussion we gotta have, whether it's gonna go through or maybe. Three blocks, because the major was four lots and then it's considered four, but that was done for water tap as far as the water tap mortaring, but this break in this property does not get any more than three water taps than originally we had. So, the fourth lot already has some water tap.
So, it's only three new water and sewer, three new water and sewer connections. But it's still a four-lot subdivision because four lot is the name. Because I believe from a procedural standpoint, we would have a preliminary plat and a final plat. But for water usage purposes, it's only three. Which fits, I think the three new taps fits our, fits under what we've had for the mortaring. Is, is everybody else agreeing with that?
I'm gonna recuse myself.
So, just to recap, it's a three, three new lots that would require water and sewer. One existing residence that's already connected to water and sewer. But it is a four-lot subdivision because it's, it's one piece of property now, it's gonna be about the four. So, if we fill this mighty, it would be as a preliminary plat, we'd have to come back to the top.
Three or four is a major subdivision.
When you hit four, it's a major subdivision versus three is a minor subdivision. And a minor subdivision only requires a final plat and a major subdivision requires preliminary plat. Improvements if any are needed and then a final plat. And if any bonds are required, which I don't, on this one, I don't know that they're doing this simply because there's no new roadways, no new water lines, no new sewer lines. So, unless Steve comes up, unless there's something needed for the infrastructure around it, I don't know that there's any improvements needed for this subdivision because it exists for a little bit. Exists water, exists sewer.
What's the parcel, we have a parcel on this?
It is. O twenty-one, H is in Harry, group A is in Apple, parcel thirty-one point zero zero. If I'm, yeah, parcel thirty-one. And it's at, it's at the corner of Lawrence and Broadview. That question came up earlier. The Bell and Bigger's name was just the name of the original plat from years and years ago. It was a named lot on the Bell and Bigger's addition to Chapel Hill from years, years ago. So, as far as discussion, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we establish this would be considered a major subdivision. Steve, is that your interpretation? So, specific to that point, is there any other discussion we need to have to determine whether this was a minor plat or a major plat? And yet knowing this would be a major plat, so what we have before us tonight would be the preliminary plat. Not, not a final plat, because it was only three new lots. If it was only three lots total, it would be a minor plat which only requires a final plat approval. So, is everybody on the same page with that? If you got any questions about that? No? Okay.
Yes, sir.
And I believe there were some engineer comments, but of course, being a preliminary plat, I believe we could incorporate addressing those comments in the final approval if we do want to approve this as a preliminary plat.
This is a, this is catty cornered.
If you went, if you went west on Broadview, you would pass Lawrence and it would be in the right. Is that, is that accurate?
Cross from the church.
Across from that little church in the corner right there. So, if you left the highway going toward the railroad tracks.
Yep, yes.
When you pass, when you pass the, the house lot, it is the corner of Lawrence and Broadview. It's just before you get to Bigger's Street. Bigger's is confusing everything because that was just the name of the, their proper subdivision. Yep, yep. Okay, so we've determined this is a major subdivision. Is there any discussion from this body on the four-lot subdivision as a preliminary plat? And Steve did have some comments, so I think those comments would need to be incorporated into an approval if we make an approval to approve this as a preliminary plat. I don't, this came up earlier, I, I don't know if it's in the comments or already on the plat because it's really small and hard to read, but we would need to make sure that all lot lines, sidelines, rear line, front line, all lot lines have a public utility and drainage that's shown on the lot and stated in the comments on the notes on the plat. Can you read that, Ben?
No.
Any other discussion?
Does the recusal form need to be signed on this?
Excuse me?
Does the recusal form need to be filled out?
Uh, the, Mr. Knox has said that he will recu- recuse himself.
But the form doesn't have to be filled out?
That's a, I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah.
As long as it's verbal, as long as it's verbal and on, and on record, it'll show up in the next month's.
Make sure it says the minutes, I'm sure.
It'll be on next, on the, reflected in the minutes of the meeting. Do we have a motion on this as a preliminary plat?
Make a motion, sir. To approve?
Yes.
All right, with, do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? And I think one discussion item would be Steve's comments.
Yeah, all of them.
That we already had. And confirm it again, I just can't read the writing there, confirm that we do have public utility and drainage mix.
Yeah, I said, just to clarify, this is a motion to approve this as a preliminary plat conditioned upon me, the comments that the engineer has made as part of the records. And, and your, your comments with respect to the.
So, we will, we will add all that to the motion?
Sure.
All right, and second it with those additions. Charles?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, we'll call this vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record reflect, motion has unanimously with warning extension from Mr. Knox. As a preliminary plat with the conditions that we set. All right. Next item on tonight's meeting is discussion items. And I believe we, we got one discussion item on Crutcher Road. We got the permitted use table under discussion and something with R P, R P, I was saying. Let me see what, R P P is, I saw something. So, we'll start with Crutcher Road. This was right up against the packet.
Yeah.
And this is just for discussion, I don't know anything.
They wanted to combine their lots.
Okay.
And we dealt with the county and I think you might have gotten a few to ask about how they need to handle that. And they would need to have a plat drawn up to show that the lot lines were disappearing. So, what they do.
So, the thirty-six and thirty-seven will become one parcel.
So, I'm not sure when that's gonna happen, Danny.
I, the last I spoke with the engineer on this, their engineer was about a month ago and as far as I know, nothing has been submitted or questioned about it. They, they were actually waiting for the applicant to basically engage them or their special contract. Bottom line is they're looking to put in a building up there and they're wanting a couple of items. We had a discussion about where it'd come in off of, whether thirty-one A and I recommended a construction entrance off of both, actually, off of Crutcher and thirty-one A where they could kind of access the property from both sides. They were initially just wanting to use the driveway that is there and with some issues there. They also wanted to, if I remember correctly, rent the house that's currently being rented there until they get ready to finalize all construction and all. And I told them I wasn't really comfortable with that, but I would mention that to the planning commission and see where we want to go with that. And I did talk to him, I think the preliminary conversation was it'd be about eight thousand square foot building and I told him he needed to be sprinkled, have sprinkler system and all the things that go along with that. So, there's a lot of things moving on this. I have not heard back from the engineer. Any of you heard anything from, from them? So, I know he's interested in the area, he's willing to put his business there, but I don't know how fast he'd want to move on this.
So, we just.
I just, yeah, I, I would, I would wait till the applicant agrees it for, for the planning commission. I'm just giving you a heads up, there's some issues there that, uh, they're questioning. My, my question, I guess, to you guys would, you know, to rent the house until, until they build.
Is it currently being used as a res- a residence?
Yes. Didn't, didn't we do some sort of rezoning on this?
We rezoned the corner either to be the same as the rest of the property or maybe we rezoned the corner or B three on the rest of V two? So, yeah, gotcha.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would just recommend we look at the zoning and any prior plat approvals or, I'm sorry, site plan approvals that we have on it, they can submit what they want. And then as far as if it's a continuation of an existing residential use, the town is, even if we rezoned it, is typically allowed them to continue until it's terminated.
Well, and on the, and Steve, I don't know how this would work, you might know with thirty-one A being a state highway, if they utilize any portion of the road frontage even for construction entrance, I believe they would have to get a T dot permission and they'll probably have to put up a bond for a commercial connection with T dot as well. And if they're too close to the intersection, they could require what they require from the gas stations to do a, a right-in, right-out on the highway and, you know, right-in, left-on Crutcher. But I, I believe it has to do with your proximity to the intersection. Yeah, and that's, e- e- even if it's just a construction entrance, that's something we probably need to entertain.
And I believe this is the problem that they started moving dirt.
Yeah, I did, when we did, yeah. When it gets in the city, it's gonna go to Washoe County Highway Department, county would be T dot. Even though it's a state.
Say that one more time.
Thirty-one A?
No, thirty-one A is a state.
Still, T dot's a state.
That's a.
Yeah, it's a state. Yeah, yeah, no, Crutcher would be.
Correct, correct. Now, Crutcher is a.
State highway, T dot.
Now, Crutcher is a county road, that might be a conversation we need to have with.
Yeah, if they, if they decide to come out on that, we would have, we would have that conversation.
Insurance order.
Right. Okay. So, we just, this is something for, put on our radar for the future.
Yep.
Permitting use table, y'all had a chance to look over that. Amy's been diligently working on that and I believe the highlighted areas are classifications that we've added in that we didn't previously have or changes to classifications that we have.
I think I'll need to look at all of the different criterias, uh, different zoning options. The, the ones that are highlighted are the ones that I added from last month. Version is just a cleaner, I thought it might help, help you like have a cleaner.
So, do y'all wanna take this home as homework and adopt this in May if it looks suitable to everybody? Or y'all wanna discuss it tonight? All right. Is everybody okay with that? All right, so we will take this home, come back in May and hopefully, hopefully in May.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say just where this all started, just to remind, is that, you know, most everything is zone B two down the main street. And so, what I would at a minimum say, look at what all's permitted under B two and if there are particular uses that you really don't want in the middle of town under B two, you know, circle those. Um, because that, and of course, any other zones too, but that's where we kind of started with it, so.
All right, we'll look at this again in May. Other items for discussion tonight are R P P.
Yeah, they're looking to, to add permit, what, simple warehouse with this outside building, basically.
Storage, yeah, storage for.
Got inventory. I told them, you know, everything, look who we get the codes and all that and blah. But the bottom line was, his thing was trying to match the current building there and wouldn't know, would you guys?
I mean, I would think they would have to submit a, a plan.
Okay.
To this.
It, it's, I have to get it outside, so it, it's, I'll have to go back.
Thousand square foot?
At least, yeah.
Uh, and, and, and I, I mean, we've done it before in town, but as long as the finished veneer or covering on outside matches the existing building.
Okay.
Uh, if it's not something in our, that we allow now, would we have to, could we approve it as a special exception or would we need a may or an excuse?
You're talking about with just the exterior design?
The, the, the design and the finishes.
I mean, the fit, the materials?
Yeah, if it's, I, I don't know if it's precast concrete or is it a metal?
It's a metal building and that, you know, I know.
It's like the reverse corrugated metal.
Right, right.
Yeah.
If, to, in order to do that an exception, I think there needs to be some sort of exceptional circumstance, like it does face the road or it's a certain distance from the road or something like that. Otherwise, you can look at it and say, well, this really isn't that bad. Let's amend our construction design standards and add this as an option to it if it's something that's not.
Would imagine what's already on the building?
It does definitely help, yeah, because if it's consistent with the other structures, yeah.
Yeah, of course, the whole, the whole building is just a metal warehouse right now.
And we have done that before, yeah.
It's not gonna be attached to the admission of, so you're gonna have to worry about.
Right, is it gonna be in the front or the rear, you know?
It's gonna be, if I'm going down Crutcher, it's gonna be in front of that side, basically on the side of the building.
Where the parking lot is, load dock?
Yes.
So, it would be very visible from Crutcher.
It would, from Crutcher, yes.
Yeah, but there, as you said, there is language in the design guidelines that say if it's consistent with the existing finishes, the town can allow it.
And this. Donna, you may know, is R P P on a private subject system? Because I don't think the city.
They're not on the sewer.
They're not on the sewer system?
Correct.
Okay. Which I don't guess this new building would, is it gonna have any plumbing in this new building?
No, it is strictly drive-in, pull-out inventory, pass through it.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
At least that's what I'm thinking, so.
So, I believe we could just get back with them and tell them to submit a, a, a site plan and design review, just if they want to match the existing building, just submit some plans showing what the finish on the outside of the door would be. I'll go with that, it'll come the next meeting or the following meeting. Other discussion as well, this was dropped off, this was dropped off at the city today. As everyone knows, there is a. as everyone knows, there is a water shortage in this area and there was a, an advocate for ColumbiaDamNow.com. Uh, they're trying to get the Columbia Dam on the Duck River reopened to provide water access to us and future generations. And I don't, I don't know that this is anything we need to discuss. It's in, it's in y'all's package. There's a little website. It's just ColumbiaDamNow.com. Anyone else interested in what this is about, this is, uh, just advocating a future, a current need for a water source and for future generations, uh, to have water. Do we have any other discussion items for tonight?
I do.
Okay.
I have a little video to show you guys.
All right.
Um, lots of engineering, you shared this with us and it's pretty cool.
Let's see what the sewer plant.
Oh, wow.
Pretty hollow ground. It's kinda like saying that the three bar mesh in there. That's the lagoon system we'll be replacing.
Well, the lagoons being used at all, so the new re-.
What about the actor system?
What is this?
S B R.
S B R.
Wouldn't be great to keep at least one pond.
So Donnie, the S B R system completely does away with the lagoons?
Yes, sir.
So that we won't keep one as a backup or nothing, just?
We're kinda getting there about that right now. We are thinking about this. The liners are so bad.
So that's, that's why we're building a new plan.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, that, that's coming along pretty well. Aren't any major unforeseen circumstances, which I'm hoping to have that in place or we're hoping to have that in place, uh, in October. So, um, that's kind of the last deadline we can get around, you know, give or take a little bit, tariffs and all that good stuff, who knows? But that's, uh, you know, I thought you guys should see this. This is one of those things that we are planning for the future, contrary to what may be out there on websites. We are looking at the future. This is a big investment for the town.
Yeah.
Uh, to handle, uh, growth and, and probably something that should have been done years ago. I think it was actually looked at and planned, uh, several years ago and then there we are.
And it takes rooftops to pay for it.
That's right.
Yes.
Takes rooftops to pay for it.
Just so, just to be clear, everybody, uh, there's, uh, fees put in line that this actual building and development is helping pay for that.
Yes.
Pay for that sewer plant that building development had nothing to do with, that actually, uh, that, that lagoon system was failing the town and needed to be replaced. The city at the time did not have the money, so.
Yes.
It was put in on the builders and the developers to help pay for that new system. So we get charged an extra five thousand dollars on top of our building, uh, permits to help, it goes directly to that plant to help pay for it. So building and development is a big part of why that plan is here.
It's not only goes through that, okay, going to hell. So just directly to.
Yeah, that's, uh, you know, and rate, it is, you know, the ones, the, the actual citizens of Chapel Hill are the rate payers for this. If you're outside of the county, of course, you're not getting the, the service or anything, but, you know, that has to be paid for by residents here living in the town, so. You spread the rates out, that, that's how that works. Um, again, that's multi-million dollar project that the town's embarked upon and, and it's moving forward with it, so. Just thought you guys would wear that. I'll, I'll have some pictures and stuff, we'll allow, which we can put out, but, uh, be glad to answer any questions, anybody.
How much, how much further you think they're still out, Ben? What are they saying?
Do what?
How much further are they still out?
They're, they're saying that probably October they'll be done. Now, every, every time I go down there, they're doing stuff. I mean, you know, and Donnie checks on daily, Richie's down there, Brian runs the tests and runs pretty much the, the lab down there. So he's seeing it every day that they're, they're doing something. Uh, they've been a very good contractor group to work with.
Everybody hear it? October.
Yeah, we heard it first.
Done in October.
We heard it the first time.
Thanks.
So I'm hoping that works, uh, you know. Now, if something happens, I'll hear about that too, I'm sure, but, uh, bottom line i- is they're working toward that and I think it's gonna be in place and we'll have our silver issue.
How, how, how many years will this support the town? Gosh, um, fifteen, twenty years would probably.
Maybe wait twenty-five.
Twenty-five years, okay.
So we're, we're, we're out quite a bit on that. It's, uh, it'll handle what we need for immediate future and we got spanability up to a million gallons.
And currently, the lagoons are pushing forty years old?
Eighty-eight, yeah.
So they're, they're close to thirty-eight.
They were, they were, they were failing and needed to be replaced.
Yeah.
Like, there, there was failing for anything that had to be replaced.
It didn't make sense to put money into that something.
No, we could, I mean, you can't, you couldn't upgrade those. Uh, the bottom line is if, if we continued on and we had a failed system and all, then the state would have been down here saying you gotta do something, so.
And their most property taxes, the rates would have.
Yeah.
Would have went through the roof.
Yeah. Anyway, that's, uh, that was a bond that we, we took on and the counties or the cities doing a good job on that. The only other thing I have is I want to pass this out for discussion. It is, um, fences and walls regulation. I know we've gone back and forth on this a couple of times. Um, I need some, from an administration standpoint, we need some guidance on this and we need something probably to put in our regs. Um, basically, you know, how high they can be, um, six to eight feet, whatever, uh, design, constructed materials in accordance with provisions came in, contained in the design guidelines. Where we're running into issues i- is, I'd like to put in there, you know, people on the right, I guess, still right up on the line of fence. Bottom line is, is whenever you go maintain that, if you step on another person's property, you're you know, on that person's property. So we need some guidelines on that. Um, we also need, be charged a permanent fee, which we're not. So we'll determine that. Uh, my recommendation is probably fifty to a hundred dollars. Billups can do some research on that as well.
Is that to build fences?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just to take information.
Change permission?
One, one thing, if they do have to, if someone comes in to get a permit to build a fence, if all of our new subdivisions have a five feet public utility and drainage management along all lot lines, we need to have them sign a disclaimer or a hold of harness of some kind where they acknowledge that they are putting a fence.
Yeah.
In a platted public utility and drainage management. And if that fence ever needs to be taken out.
Is that five foot from the center?
Five foot each way.
Each way.
So about one has five foot, about two has five foot, so it's a ten foot strip between every residence that'll be built for public utility and drainage. Now, most newly platted subdivisions, like I was looking over the plan, uh, on the, is it Wellington or Ellington?
Ellington.
On the Ellington subdivision, they've already, look like in their construction plans, they've already got predetermined pads crowned for all the houses to go in. So in a lot of your master plan developments, everything's already gonna be crowned and most of those public utility and drainage movements would not ever be utilized, but in the event that the city or the utility company did need to come along there, the applicant would just know that they might have their fence torn down for drainage reasons or utility reasons.
Well, that's everybody. That is kinda what I'm, I, I tried to word it that way. No fence or wall may be constructed, repaired, rebuilt or relocated if it's or obstructs drainage or public utility access. Prior written approval from town administration or planning commission is required for any construction placement or repair of fences.
Is that for residential and commercial?
I think it is, yeah.
Now, commercial, at one time, don't we have to have a block between eight houses, maybe?
We, we, uh, last hit, but we, we've had offenses before and new up.
And new up.
If we issue a permit, would we have to, um, would we have any kind of liability? Because right now it's a civil matter between the homeowners.
I don't, I don't think so.
Generally, no. I mean, again, um, you wanna say here's what the permit's for and what documentation you require to accept that. But as far as going out there and have, I mean, the town can enforce it and say, you know, if they find a violation, cite for it, but as far as having a liability and a duty to do that, not.
So you, so there's gonna be a permit, just have an inspection?
Probably. And on the, you might ask the county building codes office, there is a certain height. Six or, or wind shear where it requires an engineer stamp, because of wind, and not a wind catching fence, you know, if you build a a solid wall with no air slats in it, uh, it could be a safety hazard.
One thing that would probably be, I've engaged at least before, um.
Is that six feet tall?
Is that? Is making, just like in building, requiring an eight eleven number, you know, it's, it's minimal, but it would.
Okay, that's good.
You know.
Yeah, this, this is just, like I said, I wanna throw this out to you guys, get the ball rolling, um, try and put something in place in the near future so that we can, uh, address this, cause I recently had to address several fence issues, which for the most part are civil issues between the, the neighbors, but, um, you know.
So and, and also this region's like no farm fences, no forewards, no.
No, it, it needs to be designed criteria.
Also, you need to put something there, you know, fencing in the front yard or whatever.
Yeah, that's what I, I'd say all new, um, no fence, a close front yard fence up to the rear corner of the house, I guess, is that correct?
Yeah.
That's what we do. So anyway, that's kinda what I'm thinking and Todd, I'll probably bounce some legal.
Okay.
Jargon off of you, but, uh, get the ball rolling.
Make this into a big project.
Fences are fun, aren't they?
Yeah, that is true, Bill. Just trying to figure out what the front corner is. There could be a lot of front corners.
Okay.
I have a question.
Recommend people check their C C hours and eight.
Oh, you know, C C hour.
Not the city, not the city would enforce that. Yes, sir.
Uh, Wes Hagan, uh, I live here, Isaac, how you? When the fencing in there, does that include spools?
Spools should be gone.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty soon.
Do you want some?
No, I do not want any.
Move some table, make, make a small one.
Go check aboard.
Okay, how, any timeline?
I don't think, I think that gentleman has passed away out there.
I saw him the other day.
Impossible, probably.
We recall the passing away, so.
Okay.
I'm having a tombstone made right now, so I hope, I'll have to get something on.
Okay, I just, I just cured on timeline on that maybe or. That's gonna make my wife real happy.
We, we were working on getting rid of it before that happened also.
And I think the enforcement, the enforcement is a little different than what this body will do, but we, we, we can make the rules and pass them along.
I still see lots on out there, so. Okay, just, just a question, all right?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I wanna, um, bring out this, is if we are going to enforce, um, buffers, uh, on, on businesses and, and new things, should we enforce making sure the lots are clean and business ready before granting?
I think the last thing to do around.
I'm just like to the right of the new gas station, it's kinda.
Yeah, they might be keeping their plane case hardener.
No, to the right of the, the gas station. Now, I mean, it's, now, now it's encapsulated completely like concrete and I, you know.
So I do know, uh, from the building codes standpoint, all they look at is ten feet of that building.
For sure.
So from, 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 from what is outsourced.
Maybe we can put something. Maybe we need to put something on our sub-rates.
I think if we changed it, there's, somebody with the city staff would have to address it because the building department, they're just gonna look at what's required by the, by the two thousand eighteen I R C code. Uh, but that's something I think the city could.
You're talking about commercials, you know? Yeah, you could, you, you require to have the landscaping and everything installed and have it bonded and have everything.
Now, now what I, what I do think the city could do with the county code department, you could have a little checklist of items that the city has to approve before the county can moor the town building.
Yeah.
And the checklist items could be cited as clean. Uh, sidewalk is installed with this, the county building code department could inspect someone's building and the sidewalk could slip through the cracks and never happen and it would from their standpoint, you know, the building was inspected, so we could, we could create a little checklist of items that would be required for the city to just send a little checklist to the county saying all these items are done, or the county notify others, they request a time of building inspection, are these items done? City, all, all of that, the county.
Or if you decide that you're keeping the dirt for a next project that was near that property or on the.
They, they, maybe put up a, a reclamation bond to be allowed to do that, to put a time limit on it.
Yeah.
Kinda like what happened in, uh.
If they know somebody's trying to buy some of the dirt and stuff from them, but at this point, it says to save the, so.
He's probably saving the scum still and all that.
Well, I, I, I'm just giving you what I got.
Yeah.
I think you did, I think.
I mean, he could easily handle that with financial security.
Yeah.
If he gives somebody a limitation, they're.
They're gonna try to get around all of this, it's like this guy is expecting, this is the dirt, he's trying to tell me to buy all the dirt. Had a guy buying to buy it, it's, 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 excuse it all and stuff, the wooden stuff, you know.
Anything else under discussion or closing remarks?
Does the fencing include agriculture fencing, say up here behind beside Coop, the general store? Say they wanted to put up a fence, they wanna run cows in the lot?
Now, my, my opinion, and I might prefer to talk on this, but my opinion would be anything that truly is agriculture and the right amount of acreage is owned and it is a working farm would probably be exempt if it's, if it's an actively working farm. Uh, Todd?
Yeah, I mean, I think anything pre-existing is probably gonna be exempt anyway, but also, yeah, probably ag is gonna be exempt. But all that's in the drafting of the language and making that clear, so we don't, we haven't really started that yet.
That, that is, that is a good question.
That's not fenced across, beside general store is not fenced in, but if he wanted to put a fence around it on twenty acres of it to put cows in, would that have to fall underneath, uh?
Is it? If, I, I.
They're working on the language.
I think it could.
Beside the general store?
Right.
The bean field?
Chuns or, or, or.
Agents.
Hutchersons.
Yeah, craves.
Yeah, craves. But if it's, I mean, if.
If it's true agriculture purpose?
Well, it's already being used, right? Cause they grow beans out there, don't they? So it's already, it's already being used for agriculture, I would, I would think that would be allowed in the ground.
I have a question. So, um, hopefully the water will be, uh, ready in October. So I live inside Chapel Hill, but I have to have a septic tank, even though I'm hooked up to the city sewage, um, I guess because of capacity when they build the house.
It's a, it's a, a great, uh, it's a great water system currently.
Right.
Everybody, everybody except for new developments has a, a holding tank for their solids.
Okay, so will we be able to hook up to the septic once the, the water issue's fixed?
So that's, that's probably something the city engineer would need to look at and it would part of it would be determined on the size of the li- the line in front of your house, if that line could handle solids. Maybe yes, if the line was not originally designed to handle solids, then maybe not. So that would be an engineering. That would be something if you wanted to do away with your sewer tank and just be a direct discharge into the city sewer main, you would probably have to get an engineer to look at it and our city's engineer review it.
I imagine there'll probably be a handful of people that'll wanna look into that when the time comes, so just maybe something to think about.
But I think it is doable if all the infrastructure, if all the infrastructure would handle it that way.
If they're having problems with it though, could we, would that be on our end, we're gonna fix that?
Not, not if it's in their line, if it's in the sewer main, it's the city problem or just the service line.
Is that?
Going from the house to the main instead of, it's the.
Problem waters.
I guess worst case, we could hook, hook it up and redo the house and the yard on my property if it was too small, right?
If, if, if your piping is too small, you can redo it. Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, your service line. Yes, sir. Uh, anything else?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all the things they have?
Ah.
Anybody opposed?